I hereby open the planning commission work session. Sandy, can we have a roll call, please?
Chair Salazar.
Present.
Vice Chair Bergen.
Here.
Commissioner Buck.
Present.
Commissioner Thompson.
Present.
Commissioner Schmunk.
Here.
Commissioner Rhodes Die.
Here.
Commissioner Stout.
Here.
Great, we've got everybody. All right, are there any adjustments to the agenda? Seeing none, I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until your call to provide public testimony. This meeting is a work session where the public may attend but not provide comment. There will be opportunities to address the planning commission later tonight during our regular session at 7:00 P. M. But until then, we have our first agenda item for the work session, which is parliamentary procedure and public hearings training from Christina. Christina Press.
Thank you. So that I'll let Sandy share the slides. These slides are in your packet, but I'll share them as we go through the training. The primary purpose of the training is to focus on procedures for the planning commission, but it's also a good opportunity to brush up on ethics, public meetings, and public records requirements. And for any public who are watching this as we're recording later, it also serves the purpose of helping the public know how to effectively engage the planning commission and understand better their legal rights for the land use decision making process. The next slide. Oh, yeah, that was what I just said. Sorry, next slide again. So the planning commission, just real quick, your bylaws. You may not realize that you operate under bylaws because they are adopted into the municipal code and are not a separate document. These are things that cannot change about the planning commission without city council approval. There are seven members on the commission. No more than two can be in the same kind of business or profession at a time, and that stems from state law. You serve for your terms. There is a two-year term limit unless overridden by a council vote. You're you meet once per month, and you can meet especially in between those regular, at least once a month meetings. And you have a defined scope of authority, so you only have authority to act on certain matters that come to you or are scheduled by staff, and you can make recommendations on a broad range of things to the city council, but you don't have actual decision-making authority over legislative type decisions. And unless, oh, and also, please feel free to interrupt with questions as we go. So meetings and procedures is the first topic we're going to talk about. So it requires a quorum of the commission to meet. This was more relevant when we didn't have a full commission, but the quorum is fifty percent of current appointed members plus one. So when there are vacancies on the commission, that doesn't make it more difficult to meet the quorum. If there are only five appointed members at any one time, a quorum is three. Otherwise, out of seven members, a quorum is four. Meetings follow a set agenda. Obviously, even new commissioners know this by now. And the specific items that you hear follow a very strict public hearing process that's set out in the development code. And I think for several of you, this will be the first of those, that type of public hearing this evening. So that's one reason why we're going over this right now. The process that you follow can be changed by motion and vote of the commission. In certain cases, that might be necessary to deviate from the standard in the code if there's a good reason to. And then we're required under Oregon law to take meeting minutes, and you will have seen those in your packet. You approve those regularly. Next slide. So on Oregon Public Meetings Law, that's the sort of base requirement for how you can discuss planning commission business. You cannot, the most important thing is that you cannot, as a quorum, meet outside of a noticed planning commission meeting. So that would be any four of you collectively or serially, like a game of telephone, discussing a matter that would come before the planning commission as part of your business. This includes any communication by phone, in person, email, texting on any deliberation or discussion of planning commission business.
May I interrupt? Good question. Does that, I specifically looked at the term quorum. My previous understanding was that was any meeting of members regarding any type of planning commission discussion. Is it that the case, or is it that four or more, excluding the serial meeting, which is a different matter, but four or more, or is it like if I happen to casually be talking to Commissioner Schmunk about something? Can you clarify that?
The city attorney's office just recommends that commissioners avoid all discussions outside of the meetings because of the potential for serial meetings, and the fact that a quorum doesn't need to know that there was a quorum in order for the rule to be violated, and that was what happened with Lake County several years ago. Commissioner A talked to Commissioner B, Commissioner B talked to two other commissioners. Commissioner A may not realize that Commissioner B has had another conversation, but so essentially, one person can act intentionally or unintentionally as a hub to connect a serial conversation together, and then a quorum has participated in that deliberation outside of public meeting, and all of those commissioners could be liable for the violations. It's important, I think, to note that public meetings violations fall on individual commissioners as your own liability. So I give you my best recommendation, but ultimately, I think the, you know, the decisions on where's that line for you rests with you each individually as commissioners. I certainly advise against putting anything in writing that could be forwarded. I think that creates just a lot more risk than one-to-one conversations do, but I still would caution you in having one-to-one conversations as well. And this is, the primary reason for this is it's the right of the public to attend all meetings, essentially the, you know, the old adage about seeing how the sausage is made. The public has a right to see how decisions are made and what goes into decision making. I'm sorry, I will try to orient myself so I'm less just talking to the people that are sitting on the table. I don't want to have my back to those of you on Zoom. And just for those of you on Zoom, just shout out if you have a question. You're kind of to the side of me, so I can't necessarily see you. You're raising hands. And then meetings also must be accessible to people with disabilities under the Americans with Disabilities Act. So this primarily has to do with where we schedule our meeting and then what aids we have available. Also during electronic meetings, you know, providing close captioning or other resources can be helpful. Next slide. Oh, that one. So parliamentary procedure is not always a strict requirement. There's nothing in Oregon law that says we have to use a particular type of parliamentary procedure. The city council follows Robert's Rules of Order. The planning commission, by to be in common with the city council, also uses Robert's Rules of Order. But even under Robert's Rules of Order, with unanimous consent, the body can deviate from those requirements. Parliamentary procedure is the most helpful when deliberating towards a decision. It really helps to provide structure to complex decisions, especially with the larger the group gets. One thing that is really important is that it's not parliamentary procedure, but it's our land use hearings process. It's important to follow that process unless we have a good, very good reason to deviate from that, such as, you know, giving, making sure the public has an opportunity to be heard if there's been some issue that's come up. Under Oregon land use law, a decision that the planning commission or city council makes can be overturned if we don't follow the required process, and somebody can show that it caused them to be injured, that their rights were injured, that they didn't have the fitful fair opportunity to participate in the decision because of the deviation from a required process. And planning commissioners can always raise a point of order or ask a question, and myself or Sandy are available to be resources if there's a question about are we following the right process or, you know, did we, do we need to go back and redo something? It's always better to sort of go back and repeat a step of the process if we're concerned that we haven't followed it than to proceed to make a decision and realize later that we didn't follow every procedure. Any questions on the procedures part of it? Okay, making a motion. This is a pretty simple aspect of Robert's Rules of Order. The chair announces the order of business based on a set agenda, so unlike other bodies, there's no need for a motion to set the agenda. The chair then recognizes the speaker for a particular item, and then when a speaker has the floor, they would make a motion to consider a specific action. Typically, for planning commission decisions, you have an order or recommendation in your packet that can be the basis of your motion. And it is proper to say, I move that we adopt, recommend approval of, rather than I motion to. And I think one thing that's important to note is that a movement, the person who makes the motion, isn't required to vote in favor of their motion if they change their mind through deliberation. It's considered in bad faith, though, to move for something that you are decidedly not going to vote for. Motions for adopting resolutions or orders need to be seconded. The sheet here will tell you some types of motions that don't need seconds, but substantive motions to take an action typically do need a second. And then, as needed, there can be discussion to modify the motion. For example, if somebody moves to continue the public hearing to June 20th, and because of the holiday, the next planning commission meeting is June 21st, but the, you know, somebody makes an error, another planning commissioner can say, oh, I think you meant to say June 20th, and they say, yes, the original movement can restate their motion or correct it at any time after it's seconded, but before the chair puts the motion sort of in play by restating it for the commission. So it doesn't, a motion that's sort of corrected doesn't need to be re-seconded as long as the chair hasn't sort of summed it all up and restated what the motion is. Once the chair puts the motion on the floor, sets it in play, however, then any changes to the motion would need to be seconded and voted on as an amendment. That would be the formal process. Any questions on making a motion or sort of that?
I guess Christina, could you differentiate between discussing, when an item is brought before us, we typically, while I've been on commission, we've tended to discuss the item, and then there's not much discussion around the motion. Is it important to differentiate between discussing the item and discussing the motion?
Yeah, let's get to the, let's go through the rest of the slides on motions, and then we'll come back to that. So the next one is changing a motion. So I started to talk about this a minute ago. Before the chair has summarized the motion at play, it can be withdrawn, it can be modified without a second. But after the chair has announced back their understanding of the motion, that it can only be withdrawn or modified if everybody agrees. So sort of by unanimous consent. And there's not unanimous consent, that an emotion can be amended either to change what the motion says, or if there's a particularly complex motion, you could break it down into a couple parts. So for example, if there's an order to approve two applications, and there's disagreement on one of those, or it makes sense to consider them separately, like a plan amendment and a zone change, you could move to break the, to consider separately the plan amendment first and the zone change second. Amendments require a second. The amendment itself can be debated, and then the amendment would be voted on separately. So you would be voting on whether you want to amend the main motion, and then you would go back to discussing the main motion as amended if that amendment passes. And then making a decision. So debate, when, especially when amendments come into play, the debate should be focused on the immediate question in front of you, whether that's whether to amend the main motion or the main motion itself. Debate shouldn't talk about other matters that have been. So if you're, say, there's an amendment to separate out, you know, sort of to consider two applications separately, would not be proper to have discussion on whether you ought to adopt neither of them sort of in that, or or talk about the merits of whether you should approve them. You should really keep your discussion on whether it makes sense to consider them separately. And then at any time, a commissioner could call for a vote by saying, I called the previous question, or I called the question of. And then if there's two-thirds approval, you can proceed immediately to vote in that if there's, or if there's unanimous consent, like, yes, we're all ready to vote, let's just do that. If there's, if not everybody is ready to vote, then it takes two-thirds vote to decide whether to vote. So it's commonly referred to as we're going to vote whether we want to vote. And then when it is time to vote, the chair will restate what is being voted on so that everybody is clear about what's, what they're voting for at that time. If a motion, this is important for our planning applications, when you have a decision on an application in front of you. If there's a motion to approve an application and that motion does not pass, then that does not mean the planning commission's work is done. Typically, for a body, if a motion to approve something doesn't pass, then it basically means that it's dead. But with land use applications, the planning commission has to make a written decision. So in that case, you have to keep going until you can either get to an approvable decision with conditions or changes to the findings, or you have to adopt, you have to approve a decision to deny the application. And for land use applications, the final decision must be in writing. It has to be based on findings of fact, and it has to be supported by substantial evidence in the record. And substantial evidence is evidence that a reasonable person would use to reach a decision. They, you know, importantly, when there's conflicting evidence, you don't have to, the requirement isn't that you pick what everybody would agree is the best evidence, but that whatever decision you make has substantial evidence behind it. There may be, you know, more people that come in and say X is true, but if the planning commission believes that Y is more credible, then you can make a decision based on Y evidence, even if whoever has a lot more evidence. So any questions on sort of that? He said that we're going to this question about deliberation. Okay. So I think that the question that you asked was, so in, under Robert's Rules of Order, any discussion on the merits of a motion would be improper before a motion is made. The planning commission has tended to discuss things and get to a point that people's sort of deliberations have happened, and then a motion is made and a vote is taken for formality's purpose. The planning commission could decide, particularly with a much newer commission who is not used to doing things sort of all one way, the way they historically have been done. You could discuss whether you would prefer to more closely follow Robert's Rules of Order when you're in your deliberative phase, when a public hearing has been closed, to try to better differentiate between the question and answer time, where you're trying to gather information from staff, from the public, from each other about an application, and then when you're actually discussing whether you want to vote. In the past, that those have sort of tended to blend together.
So that's definitely something that we'll want to consider when we get to the discussion.
Okay. So then we're gonna go into a little bit more specifics on your public hearing process. So the chair of the planning commission is the presiding officer, and in the chair's absence, the vice chair becomes the presiding officer. There are specific duties of the presiding officer under the Springfield Development Code. The presiding officer regulates the course and decorum of the public hearing. So if somebody is sort of out of order and needs to be asked to leave until they can stop actually disrupting a meeting, it would be the chair's duty to, you know, make sure the person was informed that they were being disruptive. If somebody raises a procedural request or or certain types of challenges, the presiding officer would rule on those. Obviously, staff and city attorney's office are available to assist with that. Keeping track of time limits and letting speakers know when they've reached their time limit is a duty of the chair, and then any other action that's authorized by the commission that's appropriate for conducting the public hearing. So this would largely be like calling, calling speakers forward, running the meeting and that type of thing. For quasi-judicial public hearings, these are ones where there is a application in front of a planning commission that affects a specific property and specific rights of specific individuals, rather than a legislative decision that sort of broadly affects matters for lots of Springfield residents and businesses and land, kind of all in one big group. For quasi-judicial, you're sitting as sort of a judge over an application, and so there are specific procedures that you must follow to ensure that the rights of the applicant are protected and the rights of the public. So this is the order that it goes through. This is in more detail in your packet in the code, but it's sort of summarized here. The first step is to explain the procedural requirements. Typically, the city attorney's office does that. The hearing is opened. There is a disclosure from members of the planning commission if you have any conflicts of interest, any bias against the application or in favor of the application, and then any ex parte contacts, which are discussions that you may have had or facts you may know about the application that are not in the record, that is basically, it's not in your packet. It's not known to the rest of the commission. Everybody needs to have the commission and the applicant and the public all need to have the same set of information sort of out in the public and known when the planning commission makes its decision. The public has a right to challenge the planning commission and commissioners for bias or conflicts of interest, and then the commissioners have rights to respond to that. And then once all of that sort of procedural introductory stuff is done, then there is the staff report that sort of sets out the criteria of approval for the application, the facts on the record that show the criteria is met or isn't met, explains any conditions of approval that are recommended by staff. Then next slide. And then the applicant has an opportunity to provide their testimony first. Then we move to public testimony. We go in a specific order of those in favor, those neutral, and those opposed. Following that, there is a staff summary, and then an opportunity for the applicant to have the last word. And then the planning commission may want to ask questions of the staff, the applicant, or members of the public, depending on what those questions are, and if there's new information that's introduced, then the applicant may have an additional opportunity to provide rebuttal. And I will generally flag that for the commission, that that's new information that's being presented. We should provide the applicant another opportunity. The rule essentially is the applicant always gets the last word because they have the burden of proof. They are responsible for showing that all the criteria have been met. So if there's any question about whether the criteria are met, the applicant has the last opportunity to provide evidence. And then when the planning commission is satisfied that they don't need any more oral testimony from the applicant or members of the public, they can close the public hearing. And then you would also, so whenever the public hearing is open, the written record is automatically opened, but the hearing can be closed and the written record can remain open. Under Oregon law, if a member of the public makes a request to leave the written record open at the first public hearing, then the written record at least has to be left open for a minimum of seven, seven, and seven, seven days for anyone to submit more information, and then seven days for response to that information from anyone, and then a final seven days for the applicant to respond to all new information that's been raised.
Christina, are those business days or calendar days?
Those are, and under Oregon law, whenever any date that is five or, sorry, five or more days is specified, then it's calendar days. So it's not business days.
Thank you.
So a week, basically. And then, once all of the public hearing is closed, the written record is, which could happen at a different, it could happen, not when the public planning commission is meeting, it could happen at a later meeting. Only once all of the record and the hearing are closed should the planning commission start to discuss your deliberate towards your decision, talk about compliance with criteria of approval, any policy issues, and sort of that process to reach your decision. During that deliberative process, if you disagree with findings that are presented in the staff report, or you want to change conditions of approval, you can still do that. There may be a requirement to provide the applicant a new opportunity to respond, and we can walk through that if that happens. Sometimes it's a little bit of an iterative process, depending on how complex it is. But it is not, I want to make sure that the planning commission knows that the staff report that you're presented with draft findings are a draft for your review, consideration, and approval. So if you want to find different than what is in the staff recommendation based on evidence that you've heard, that is within your authority to do that, and you can direct staff to change the findings or change conditions of approval.
Christina, so prior to the close of the meeting, the discussion with, I guess, either staff or the public, is there a structure to that, or is that kind of left up to the discretion of the chair?
The, before the close of the public hearing, there's a sort of a time for questions that's in the meeting, and the chair will generally help to call on commissioners who may have those questions.
Okay, but free flow with the public, someone sitting in the audience such that may have testified a question to them within that framework?
Yeah.
Okay, and then once it's closed, there's discussion and such, and if if another question, say, I wanted to ask some, either testified something, I, would I sort of wait till the end of the other discussion or at least mention that, and then the chair would bring that in, or is that just sort of ad hoc?
If you closed the public hearing in a meeting and then, and closed the written record and then realized, oh, we actually don't understand this issue as well as we thought. It would be really helpful if we had the applicant come back up or the neighbor come back up and talk about something some more, then you just let the chair know, I would like to, you know, reopen the hearing, and then in the meeting, you just say, we're going to reopen the hearing, and we're going to ask so-and-so to come up and answer some questions, and that's been done. It's a lot easier to do that in the same meeting that everything's been closed, than if we have a public hearing on one day. You leave the written record open for three weeks. You come back a month later and then, and then decide, oh, we actually need to reopen the hearing. Then we're going to have to do some additional notices to make sure the public knows the hearing has been reopened. It can't sort of be reopened on the spot. So it's sort of in the meeting, in the meeting that you have your public hearing, it's important to decide if you really are ready for the hearing and record to be closed, because once you're no longer in that meeting, it just becomes more burdensome to just, not burdensome, cumbersome, I think, to reopen it and provide people notice.
Let's say the written and the public hearing is closed, the written record is closed. Now we're left with a complex issue that we're, I'm not ready to vote on, and I would want to make a motion that we, would we be working on it in a work session in the future, or would it have to take place during a standard planning commission meeting? What are the options that I have if I don't have, if I'm not fully satisfied with my understanding what my duties are in terms of making a good finding?
Yeah, I think, especially with complex decisions, it's not typical to make that decision in the meeting that everything has been introduced. I think asking the chair, if, you know, is this something we can bring back to a later meeting? For quasi-judicial decisions that are sort of those permits that affect specific property, that's going to be a regular session. That's not going to occur at work session. It's all going to be deliberative and a regular session. But I think, you know, working with Sandy and Sarah, if there are legislative decisions, a complex set of code package, for example, you probably will have had work sessions before you get to a public hearing, but it is not out of, there's nothing procedurally wrong, and there is precedent for saying, you know, after the public hearing, we really would like to take the public comments we've heard in the hearing on this, you know, on these code amendments, go back into work session, really understand the issues, and then either hold an additional public hearing later, or just make your recommendation to the city council at that point, knowing that the city council always holds another public hearing when it's legislative and it's code.
I think to add, think about why you're not ready to make a decision. Is it because you don't have enough information? In which case, it's important to identify to the applicant, staff, public, what other information you would need? Or is it that you just need to have a chance to process it and figure out how the information matches with the approval criteria? So in that case, you don't need more information. Correct. So you don't need to leave the record open or the written, have the hearing continued. So then you could, in some situations, talk to staff about, you know, on an individual basis, help me understand this, or discuss it in your deliberations with the commission, or you know, there's a few different options of how do I apply the facts to the approval criteria or understand the analysis involved?
All right, thank you. It's helpful.
And also, I didn't mention this before, but the rule against ex parte contacts and these types of permit decisions do not apply to discuss with the city staff. So if you need additional help understanding what's already in the record, or if you want to ask for more information to be put in the record when the record's open, you can feel free to contact city staff or the, you know, the planner at any time. And then it's our job to make sure that whatever information we give, you know, you to clarify your question, gets out to the whole commission so that everybody has that information. And then the next slide. So there's this just sort of a a process for when, how do you know when it's time to close the hearing and the record? Because this is sort of a decision-making that sometimes just seems overly complicated, but I think it can be distilled to, you know, pretty, pretty simple steps. So the planning commission has, so if somebody makes a request, I would like to continue the hearing. I think, yeah, you have another hearing on this. Somebody gets up and says, you shouldn't make this decision tonight. You should let us come back and talk to you in two weeks. You have discretion whether you want to continue the hearing, whether people should be able to come back up to the dais and talk to you at another meeting. If you want to allow that, then you can, then you would state the date, time, and place of the hearing. You need to The date, time and place of the hearing, you need to state sort of on the record with everyone in the room for the first hearing, when the second hearing is going to be. So we don't have to mail it out to everybody and um sort of incur that expense. And then if you don't want to continue the the verbal, the oral hearing. Then you move on to the next step, so closing the hearing is always the first thing that you consider, you consider that first before considering whether to close the record. If there's a request to leave the record open. Um then that request in a quasi judicial does permit site specific decisions, that's not discretionary if it's your first hearing. Um you must agree to at least extend the record on a seven, seven, seven basis like I talked about. If no one requests to leave the record open though, then you could decide. Um do you need more information to make your decision? And even if no one has asked for it. You could decide unilaterally as a commission that you need more information from the applicant, from the public, from staff. And then in that case, would recommend that you extend the record in the same seven, seven, seven pattern. Um at minimum, you could always decide to give more time, you can allow, you know, two weeks for any new public comment. And then two weeks for applicant response, and then a week for that, you know, or two, two more weeks for public response, and then a final week for applicant rebuttal. Um if you don't need any more information from anyone and there's no request to extend the record. Um or to reopen the record if it was closed prematurely, that was that question about what if somebody, what if I want to ask a question I didn't get to ask early. Ask earlier. Um then, once sort of everything is buttoned down, the hearing is closed, the record is closed. Then the planning commission can deliberate and make their final decision. There's sort of some nuance in this because. Um and and this may come up later. Tonight, um the request to leave the record open is only. Mandatory when it's your first public hearing. On a matter, so if you have already extended. Continued the public hearing to another meeting, if at that point someone asks to leave the record open. Um it does not require that, then it becomes discretionary for the planning commission. So sometimes due to matters of timing, you may want to make a decision more quickly. You may decide to continue a hearing to your meeting two weeks later in order to avoid having to extend the record for three weeks. If that makes sense.
That's not a rule that we can move to waive, correct?
You cannot waive leaving the record open, um a sort of unless you're continuing the hearing. But once you've, once you've decided to continue a hearing, then you're not, then you have sort of. Full discretion over how long the record stays open. Alright.
This is especially important point to keep in mind for our meeting. Our regular session.
And staff, we're, we are always available to answer questions about this, like what do we, you know, if it's a, what do we do now? Or do we need to, you know, do I, do we have discretion over that request, you know, when's the next meeting?
Yeah, and I'll say there's discretion even over the seven, 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 if the applicant's in a rush.
Yes.
They can um. Modify that, they don't need to take the full time, for example.
Yes, the applicant can agree to waive the seven, 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 but the planning commission can't unilaterally decide that it's going to be, you know, five, five, five. And then the order of procedure for legislative decisions, these are those, you know, code amendments, large plans that affect large areas of property. Um not, something where you can't point to a specific or a. Group of sites, there's not sort of a discreet. Group of people um who are affected, no one has. You know, maybe the application that's involved is from city staff or. Um is, you know, initiated because of Oregon law. Um to meet legal requirements, the order of procedure in this case is a lot more, uh it's more streamlined, it's simpler, there aren't as many procedural requirements. Because um you're sort of making. A. City council's making the final decision, but the planning commission is. Um sort of considering rights of the public more broadly, and you're not sitting in that judicial capacity where you're weighing. Sort of one person's rights. So we still give an explanation of procedural requirements, we open the hearing. Um but then we go to the staff report, there's no ex parte contacts, if you are considering. A package of a code amendments that affect a lot of properties throughout Springfield, for example, you can discuss that. At the grocery store, you can discuss that at your place of worship, you can go discuss that with your um family members. Um in your workplace, I'm still cautioning you not to discuss it with other planning commissioners. Um because of the public meetings rules, but um otherwise, it's something that you are free to. Collect input from your constituents however you see fit. I still, as a best practice, would encourage you, if you have heard something outside of a meeting that is relevant to the decision making, to just bring that to the. The meeting and share that, because I think that if there's information that one of you hears from a constituent, it's probably valuable information for all of you. But that's a practical recommendation and not a legal requirement. And then you get testimony from interested parties, it does not follow a strict, those in favor, those. Neutral and those opposed, because um practically. Um it's hard to be all in favor or all opposed to a package of, you know, complex. Legislative decisions, a lot of people will be in favor of pieces of it and opposed to pieces of it or want clarification on something. And then you can have questions to or, you know, um. Questions from the chair, the the chair can direct questions to the public. Um staff. And then you would close the public hearing. Um the important thing of. Important note about the written record is that. When the planning commission closes the written record for something that's going to the city council. Really, all you're doing is saying, this is the cutoff date for what information the planning commission will consider. The record never truly closes until the city council decides. That the record is closed because. City council is the final decision maker, it just provides staff a cutoff date of what are we going to try to get into your packet, get in front of you. Make sure that you um have available versus what are we going to start collecting to provide to city council? Just practically, there needs to be a point in time at which. Uh we sort of close the universe of what the planning commission is considering, so you can make a decision. Otherwise, you would sort of never get the opportunity to make a decision on certain types of matters, because you would just be getting inundated with new information.
Christina. At that level, is that something that um our verbiage to the public can state? You know, planning the rec, the record for the planning commission is closed, anything submitted after that time. Will then be submitted to city councils so that it also prompts the public. To acknowledge that they have the opportunity. To continue providing testimony.
Yes. And then also typically, if there's like a comment box on Springfield Oregon speaks like that, that language will say that. So if you've closed the record on Springfield Oregon speaks, it will say. A planning commission record in this matter is closed, you can submit comments to the city council. You know, in this manner, so that is something that um the planning commission can say, and then staff will also reiterate to people who may. Want to like send an email to say, please, you know, send this to the planning commission. Yeah, the response will be, the planning commission closed their record, but this will go to the city council.
And logistically, uh Springfield Oregon speaks, when someone goes in to do that. It will direct them to a different area because council is not using Springfield Oregon speaks.
Correct, yeah, yeah, typically it'll have the planner's email, or if there's a project specific email, it will give them directions on how to submit their comments differently. Great, thank you. Um and then, you know, similarly to a quasi judicial decision, decision, then you would deliberate on the policy issues and compliance with criteria of approval. There are criteria of approval for legislative decisions, but they are broader and there is a lot more discretion involved. A lot more latitude for the planning commission to make their decisions, and then your decision in this case is a recommendation, it's still based upon findings. And a staff report. Um and then that recommendation goes to city council for them to consider, along with any new information on the record at their public hearing. And then we're gonna, I'm going to real quickly go through government ethics, um and.
I want to do, just do a time check.
Yeah.
Cause we've got, it's six forty and we have three other agenda items, so.
Okay.
I'm asking if you'd want to continue or we can bring this back another time.
Um, I think, so is there, there is an opportunity to bring back the next agenda items for um the next uh work session that we have.
Well, we weren't planning to have a work session um before your next meeting.
We don't have the jazz main.
Yeah.
Um, well, we could, we could just do it in the council chambers.
Okay.
Um so we could have a work session before your next meeting and and cover whatever items you don't get to tonight.
Yeah, I think it would be nice to have a discussion on Roberts rules while it's fresh in our heads. And then if we have time, we can jump, jump into the rest of the presentation.
And all I was planning to say for the government ethics and public records is that um. The ethics obligations are like, public meetings are on each of you individually as commissioners, so especially those of you who are new, you recently got training on this. Um, please reach out prospectively before a decision has been made, if you want advice from city attorney's office, otherwise. I do not have confidentiality with each, any of you individually, so please do not contact me if you are worried about something that may have already happened. Be happy to refer you to um other legal counsel if you need a referral at any time.
So, yeah, I I think we definitely want to um keep to our seven PM start time for the next meeting and have some time for break between so we can transition. So um. In the next ten minutes or so, would love to have a discussion on, especially since we've heard about Roberts rules. Um as a commission. While I've been, as I mentioned before, while I've been on commission, we've had kind of a quasi Roberts rules. Uh uh haven't strictly adhered to it, but mostly kept to it, except for. In our deliberations, which Christina mentioned is kind of the questions and deliberations can sometimes get muddled, and then once we. In the past. What is, what has happened in the last couple of years is. We wait till we see if we're at some sort of consensus and then someone makes a motion. Um, we can, as Christina mentioned, we're not bound by Roberts rules. But it would be great to hear um from the commission. Uh whether you'd like to more strictly adhere to Roberts rules. Um what's been working or not working with our procedures as we've followed them the last couple of months.
Here's Halsar.
Um I I would simply share the.
Ironically, the awkward pauses that we have part of being uh virtual and also in person. Um seem to be. I I'm I'm in favor of anything that can promote, since we are a commission in a work session, I'm in favor of anything that can promote. Uh greater interaction without these strange and awkward pauses that allow us to feel confident of what we're setting out to do whenever we are working. In a work session type environment, I know. In the last several meetings we've had, are you looking for a? A movement, are you looking, what are you looking for? We weren't really sure what we were supposed to do, so. I don't know that the closer adherence of Roberts rules would facilitate that or not. Um I. I would be interested in other commissioners' points of view as well, but um that's my two cents there.
Absolutely, yeah, so maybe more uh clarity on when uh. When we're ready for a motion maybe, or or what a motion would entail?
Or or what do we want out of any given um item that we're bringing into the work session? Like, hey, at the end of this work session, we're looking for a general consensus, or not a strict motion, a general consensus. Great, now I know how to help. Um and maybe if whether it's you calling for it, or if it's another commissioner calling for it, um. I mean, I enjoyed some of the presentations by staff very much, I thought they were interesting and useful. Um that said, it's that awkward moment of both serving them and their time and also our time. Uh I'm not, I'm not quite certain, but perhaps if if the chair who brings up the uh the. The item on the agenda for the work session is able to say, here's what it is, let's allow ourselves fifteen per minutes for this. And hey, we're getting closer to our edge of, you know, discussion time. Um I'd like to bring up our agenda, our intention for this item was to do this. Yeah, you know, are we ready for a informal vote? I don't, I don't know the answer to it, so.
Hey, uh Chair Salazar, I I just have a a thought on this.
Go ahead.
So. One of the things that stands out to me in our our work over the last couple of months is. Most of the, um not, maybe not all, but a lot of our work has been staff presentations, kind of reviewing some things. We haven't had. Um a lot of the items. Um that that maybe have come before this commission in the past, uh that just hasn't come up in the last couple of meetings. And I think that once that happens, tonight might be an opportunity for that. I think once that happens, it it really starts to delineate the type of process we're going through. When it's a quasi judicial process and, you know, there's applicants and and. Um and those kind of things, I thi- I think the meeting has a different flow and a different feel, and I think. In those times, it's it's helpful to be closer to Roberts rules, maybe not strictly. Um but I think that when we're doing staff presentations. And when we're kind of doing work session things that that don't necessarily even require a vote. Um that we can be more relaxed, and I think that that's a feel that you get over the course of time. Um I know in my time in the commission, we've had some uh some things come before us that. You know, Roberts rules have really helped us, and then um because some of the decisions we had to make. Oh, were tough ones, or we didn't all agree, and I think having those processes were really helpful. Um so so maybe that's a. That's a difference that newer commissioners are, you know, might be able to see as as we move. Move into some of those more processes, I mean, that's just a thought I had. Um because I I, it seems to me, most of our newer commissioners. Came on just after we had the joint session with Lane County and Eugene. And that was the last time we had a process that that had that kind of feel. Maybe I'm missing one, but that's the one that stands on my head. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um on, in my time serving on planning commission. And all of the um applications that have come in front of us, I have found. I feel it would be better. If we were able to move closer to Roberts rules. Because I have found that we have this great deliberation, emotions made. Oftentimes, I'm not quite ready for that yet. A motion is made and um. There's a couple of things that I would like to tweak on it. And whether the opportunity is obvious or not to have discussion on the motion. I often would leave thinking. Oh, I wasn't quite there yet. Um and so I think that if we had it obvious of, okay, here's the motion, we're opening up discussion, which is closer to Roberts rules. I feel like we would have more of an opportunity to say. This is what we discussed, even if someone had some. Motion and and a word or two that can change the intent of the motion. To be able to have that opportunity to say, let's dive into what it is you meant to say and what you are saying. And is that the direction we want to go? I think having a more obvious, which is. Which is more in line with Roberts rules. I think would benefit not only us as the planning commissioners that were walking away from that decision, but also benefit. The um the public as they can see the process, if they watch this back. Or any of them back, they can see the process that we went through. To see that not only were we discussing the evidence brought in front of us. But then we had a discussion on the table of what we're actually moving forward. And I think that would allow more transparency as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts on um? More strict, it sounds like I'm I'm hearing some uh energy towards. Um following Roberts rules of order, uh adhering to those. Those standards more um rather than less than what we've been doing so far, uh any other thoughts?
One clarification, um the planning commission can't make a formal decision in a work session. So if you wanted to choose to follow. Um Roberts rules more closely in like a public hearing environment or in a regular meeting. Um but less in a work session, you're not um calling for votes because you can't actually make a. Formal voting decision at a work session.
Yeah, sure, that um. I think that uh my thoughts are are really in line with what Christina said, and I also. Uh agree with uh Chair Bur, um Commissioner Vice Chair Bergen. That um when, when a decision uh needs to be made. Uh I think that really calling out that that spot, hey, there's a motion, it's been seconded. Um now we have, now we have some discussion on it. Um and. And and really. You know, highlighting that, I I agree with that a lot.
And Commissioner Schmuck.
Yeah, so I was just gonna kind of um. I'm gonna summarize what I've heard um. So when it's, when it's a a public hearing, I just, I think, you know, Roberts. Rules would be appropriate, it helps the us define our discussion and helps the public understand the progress. Um and then other than that. I would be okay with the chair's discretion, discretion in terms of sort of free, free flowing discussion. And what, so something less formal, if you will, so, but I think, you know, Roberts rule clearly when it's a. You know, the public involved and it's a formal sort of process that you need that. Structure to make sure everybody's heard, that you do things according to the rules.
Excellent, well, yeah, definitely here's some um. That that we're moving in. that, that we're moving in and, and that we're all certainly seems like we're moving towards consensus. I, I would like to, I don't think we necessarily need to vote on whether we'd like to follow Roberts rules more strictly. I can certainly, as chair, adhere myself to trying to follow those rules more strictly. I'd also like to challenge the rest of the commission when you're starting to get into a point where especially when we're in those, that question time, thinking, is this a question or is this an opinion that I have that, that I can save for deliberation time? So it'll, it'll take everybody. I'll certainly try to be more thoughtful about adhering to Roberts rules. We'll see how it goes. And if we feel that, that that we could, that if we feel that it's not working for us, the way that we're adhering to Roberts rules, then we can certainly bring it up in another work session or if we feel the need to vote on it, I'm certainly open to adding that to the agenda for a regular session as well, either this one or an upcoming.
May I raise a point of order that we ensure a brief five minute recess before our seven P M. Meeting?
Absolutely. I'm in definite agreement. And yeah, we'd like to give staff especially transition time to be able to move to the, the next room and for ourselves to take a quick break too. So any other thoughts before we adjourn this work session? All right. Thanks, everyone. It's been a great discussion. I now adjourn the work session. Regular session will begin at seven P M. Okay, do it again. I hereby open the regular session of the planning commission. Sandy, could we get a roll call?
Uh, sure. Chair Salazar.
Present.
Uh, Vice Chair Bergen.
Here.
Commissioner Buck.
Present.
Commissioner Thompson.
Present.
Commissioner Schmunk.
Here.
Commissioner Rhodes Die.
Here.
And Commissioner Stout.
Here.
Excellent. All right. So are there any adjustments to the agenda? Seeing none, Vice Chair Bergen will now lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And next, do we have any technical issues, sir?
Yes, we are. There we go. I'm trying change the gallery view.
I think.
Thank you. All right. Next item is approval of the minutes from April fourth and May second, twenty twenty-three meetings. Are there any corrections to the minutes as published in the packet? I guess I'll lead off. I have one set of corrections for the April fourth packet. I did not see my own mention of, of conflicts of interest in the, in the packet. I had mentioned in the meeting that I had no potential conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts. So I'd like that added to the record. Any other corrections? All right. And Sandy, I believe you had some corrections to the, the minutes as well.
Correct. For the joint meeting with Lain County and Eugene, we had listed Lain Council of Government staff. Um, we want to add a clarification that the attorneys from L C O G were in fact working directly for Lain County through a contract. So we're gonna add that clarification to the minutes, if that's okay with you.
Any questions on that correction? All right. Okay. Seeing no further corrections for those minutes, the minutes for April fourth and May second are approved with the noted corrections. All right. And next we'll move to business from the audience. We will now take business from the audience. This is the time in our agenda for the public to provide testimony on any topic relevant to the planning commission. Please note that this is not the time for comments on the discretionary use approval for E C cares. We will announce the time for that hearing later on this evening. Sir, do we have anyone in council chambers who's filled out a request to speak card?
No.
No. Okay. And no one else joining online with raised hands? Excellent. Well, I'll say this just in case we have anyone trying to, to raise their hand online. If you would like to ask members, I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until you are called to provide public testimony. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom or press star nine if joining by phone. If you are here in person, please fill out a request to speak card and present it to the planning commission assistant. When called to speak, please state your name and mailing address and please keep your comments to three minutes. Seeing no other raised hands or anyone else asking to speak, we'll now move on to the next agenda item, which is the discretionary use permit and site plan review for E C cares educational facility. Uh, next we'll have the Assistant City Attorney explain the quasi judicial hearing process.
Thank you, Chair. The role of the planning commission is to conduct public hearing and to make decisions about land use matters in Springfield. In making those decisions, the commission must, must apply the law of Springfield that existed when the application was filed and cannot vary from or change that law. Members of the planning commission are to be unbiased. Before the start of the hearing, members of the planning commission will state whether they have any conflicts of interest, such as family, financial or business relationship with any of the applicants or regarding the land in question. If such a potential conflict exists, the commissioner will state whether he or she is without actual bias and whether they would like to step down from the commission during the case. Planning commissioners will also state whether they have discussed the application in question with any of the parties or have independent knowledge of relevant facts, such as from a visit to the site in question. If any of the planning commissioners have had such contacts, they must disclose the substance of that contact. If a planning commissioner has independent knowledge of relevant facts, the planning commissioner will summarize those facts. A witness may challenge the impartiality of a planning commissioner and may rebut the substance of a planning commissioner's knowledge of the facts. The commissioner in question may respond to such a challenge. A copy of the procedures and the agenda for tonight's hearing and copies of the staff reports have been posted on SpringfieldOregonSpeaks.org. Any person with an interest in today's agenda may offer relevant oral or written testimony or both. If you want the planning commission to consider your testimony and to preserve your right to appeal the decision to the city council and ultimately to the Landes Board of Appeals, you must testify orally or in writing before the planning commission closes the written record. You must raise an issue clearly enough so that people can understand what it is and offer evidence in support of it, or else you cannot raise that issue on appeal to the Landes Board of Appeals. If you are the applicant, you must raise concerns about any conditions of approval clearly enough to allow the planning commission to respond, to preserve your right to seek damages in circuit court. If you feel you need more time to prepare evidence or testimony for the planning commission, you may ask the planning commission to hold open the record or to continue the hearing. You must make the request before the chair closes the public portion of the hearing. If the planning commission holds open the record, you can submit additional written testimony and evidence into the record before the commission makes a decision. If the planning commission continues the hearing, then oral and written testimony, including new evidence, can be offered at a future hearing. Regardless of whether the hearing is continued or the record is held open for any other reason, state law provides we must hold the record open for at least seven days after it is closed to all other parties to allow the applicant to submit final written arguments in support of an application, unless the applicant waives that right. Please make sure testimony is related to the applicable criteria. The criteria the, the criteria for discretionary use approval are in Springfield Development Code five point nine point one twenty. And the criteria for site plan approval are in Springfield Development Code section five point one seven point one seven five. The criteria are described in detail in the staff report posted on SpringfieldOregonSpeaks.org and will be summarized by staff in the presentation this evening. Finally, demonstrations from the audience are prohibited. Comments from the audience or comments from the, from the, from those online that are out of turn will not be part of the record. And that includes public comments submitted into the chat feature. That chat feature should be used only for technical assistance. Chair, it is now appropriate to open the public hearing and to ask if any planning commissioner wishes to declare any potential conflicts of interest, ex parte contacts or independent knowledge of relevant facts.
I'll open the public hearing and we'll go through a roll call to ask for ex parte contacts or conflicts of interest. I'll start off by mentioning that as, that I do have a potential conflict of interest with the applicant. I'm working in my professional capacity in my work with Homes for Good, collaborating with the applicant on another separate project. Before this meeting, I didn't think that that constituted a conflict of interest, but because that, I think that, because that could be construed as a business dealing with the applicant, I would respectfully like to step back from this decision. And as a point of order, Christina, I'd like to ask if I can still continue in my role as chair for this item without voting on the item.
If you have a potential conflict of interest, then you can participate in the discussion and voting. If you are stepping down from the decision as an actual conflict of interest, then you should not participate in any way in the discussion or deliberations. It sounds as though you have a potential conflict of interest, the correct procedure would be to participate as long as you do not have any actual bias on the outcome of the decision.
Okay, excellent. I think because my, the project I'm collaborating with is separate from this application and I have no other ex parte contacts, no dealings with the applicant around this application, I believe that I can make a an unbiased decision and that that, I will list that as a potential conflict of interest though. The, I will mention that I do have ex parte contacts and that I am aware of the operations of the applicant in a way that goes more in depth than what is provided in, in the public materials.
If at any point that awareness leads, is a, is a knowledge of facts that are relevant to your decision making, then you should declare those before the hearing is closed so that the applicant can respond to that. And an appropriate time to do that would be in the question and answer time if there is information that you are aware of that would be bearing on the criteria of approval or on your decision. If you have independent knowledge of facts that are not relevant to the decision, then you do not need to declare those.
I'll make sure to make note if operational information comes up that I'm aware of. All right. And then, okay, going down the roll, Vice Chair Bergen.
Potential conflict of interest being a practicing Realtor in the area, no ex parte contact and there is no, no bias.
Yeah, just ex parte contacts.
Do you have any independent knowledge of? Thank you. That's what it is. I knew there was one and no independent knowledge of relevant facts.
Thank you. Commissioner Bergen, or Commissioner Buck, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. Um, no, I've had no, no, I have no actual bias. A potential conflict of interest only being that I'm a commercial realist, a commercial insurance agent practicing in the area. No independent knowledge of the facts and no ex parte contact.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson.
Yeah, I can confirm I have no conflicts of interest, no bias or ex parte contacts or facts. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schmunk.
No conflicts of interest or bias otherwise.
Excellent. Thank you. Commissioner Rhodes Die.
Uh, no bias, a potential conflict of interest as a Realtor practicing in the area. No ex parte contacts and no additional knowledge of any facts.
Thank you. And Commissioner Stout.
No potential conflicts of interest, no ex parte contact, no bias and no independent knowledge.
Thank you. Are there any challenges to the impartiality of the planning commission or objections to the commission's jurisdiction to hear this matter? All right. Hearing none. We'll move to the staff report from Andy Limbert.
I I can share if I have something to share.
Thank you for your patience as we're moving back into live meetings again, complete with all the technology we got through COVID. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Andy Limbert, the project planner for this application. I just wanted to provide kind of an introduction and overview of the applications before you this evening, including just the site and the proposed development plan. The site's about eight blocks from here. It adjoins the Springfield High School. There are two adjoining vacant lots.
Does that work? Just hit the spacebar. Okay. Sorry. Okay.
Uh, two adjoining vacant lots that had joined the Springfield High School campus on the south side. The site is at the corner of G Street and Eighth Street. It's been vacant for several decades. There were houses there previously. They have been removed. The school district owns the property and is now intending to allow for a preschool to be sited on this vacant vacant lots. It is zoned R one residential district and it is a discretionary use to allow for an educational facility to be located within, within residential zoning. So the proposed development plan is for approximately twenty six hundred and seventy square foot modular classroom building with two classrooms to be sited on the western portion of the site. A driveway for three vehicles and driveway and parking lot for three vehicles would be constructed on the eastern portion of the site, taking access off of Eighth Street, which is the local street. G Street is classified as a neighborhood collector's street and it is identified for a bus zone along the frontage where students would be bused to the facility. They'd be dropped off along the frontage. The applicant is proposing to add additional concrete panels and walkways to facilitate student access to the main doors for the facility, which are on the south side of the building. The site development plan also provides for play space in the northern portion of the site. It would be fenced and there'd be portions would be covered for all weather conditions. The application meets the requirements for site plan review with the, some conditions attached. At this point, staff is recommending that the mission hold the public hearing open because there is some information that is lacking on this application. Staff has requested some clarifying information from the police department in response to public comments. The public comments focus on traffic concerns, speeding concerns and pedestrian safety primarily. So staff is obtaining records from the police department will be providing them with the updated staff reports Uh that would follow the public hearing meeting. Public comments submitted in advance of the meeting also suggests that there will be additional testimony provided at this meeting. And staff as well as the applicant would need to have opportunity to review. Comment and potentially research the information that will be provided in testimony tonight. So for those reasons. Um as well as some confusion about the initial um notification that was sent out, there was a notification sent out. For the site plan review initially and comments were submitted. Then there was a subsequent notification sent out for the discretionary use public hearing. Ideally, they really should have been at the same time. Uh but all comments that were received, whether they were within the comment period or not, um have been provided and entered into the record. And anything that has been received subsequent to the public um hearing packet, your your report packet being compiled. All of those will be provided with the next set of reports. So the recommendation that staff has is to continue the public hearing uh to allow for testimonies to be submitted tonight. For the applicant and staff to respond to any testimony that is provided. To compile additional information and research uh to confirm any findings as well as recommendations within the reports. And bring them back at a continued meeting. The next scheduled meeting would be June twenty first, which is a Wednesday. And so that's recommendation before staff and I'd be happy to answer any questions um if you have any for context or for clarification. And I do have the um criteria as well.
This is the first hearing of this um of this application, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And Sarah, you'll have to let me know if any other commissioners who are joining online are raising their hands for a question. And we will also have an opportunity after um public testimony to ask questions of Andy if it come up as well. But I just want to give another um couple seconds.
But also note that the applicant is here too. They may wish to provide um their own uh similar testimony, but they'll be hired to answer um specific questions if there are any that come up.
Okay, Commissioner Buck.
Uh thank you, Chair. Um I I just had a clarification on on classification and reading through. Uh the the comments that were posted on Springfield Oregon speaks. Uh uh there were a couple that referred to this as a childcare facility. Staff corrected that. And I and I and I just had some, um I I guess I'd like some further information as to. Um the difference in terms of. Criteria or or bearing on this decision, um given that the the age of this of the the kids that'll be there. Um you know, in in the staff presentations referred to as an educational setting, it seems to me that. Uh some consideration for the the type of students that are going to be there. Um or or kiddos that are going to be there and 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 all of that. I just would like some more information uh from staff on how they see the difference um as it was a it was a some point made in the comments.
Okay, um. Yes, so for Commissioner Buck and for for uh the the commission's benefit. Um if this were a childcare facility, would not have to go through discretionary use step. Um discretionary use um looks at whether there are any impacts. Um if there are impacts, can they be mitigated or they are they um. Untenable to the site um related to traffic, parking, um other other issues. Um you are correct, Commissioner Buck, that the age of the children is very similar. However, um the difference between the two facilities is that um childcare facilities are licensed differently with the state. And they're 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 dealt with under different um set of rules under the ORS. Um um Oregon revised statutes, childcare facilities, while they may have overlapping ages or the same ages. Are are uh licensed differently than this being an educational facility under the Board of Education, Board of Education. So um that has an extra step um and an extra burden, I guess, of proof on the applicant to demonstrate that a school. Uh could go on this on the site. Uh should the discretionary use uh be approved, then it would be allowing essentially a school. Irrespective of the age of the students, um anywhere up from preschool up to elementary school age could be. Uh contained within the classrooms. High schools are not allowable. They're not a listed use, so expansion of the high school onto the site would not be. Um even even feasible unless the site was rezoned to public land and open space. So it does have a limiting um sort of sidebars on what could be um accommodated on the site. Some testimony suggests that well, maybe here for a short time and then move on. What what will the site be used for? So there is an opportunity for a new tenancy on the site if a discretionary use permit is uh granted. Um I another school um could locate on the site, a Montessori school or some other type of of school could. Could locate on the site with a discretionary use permit if EC cares were to um leave for some reason, so. I hope that addresses your question, Commissioner Buck. I guess I don't also want to point out, there was there was one um. There was a there were a couple of shortcomings that staff had identified for conditions that needed to be met through conditions of approval. They'll be, again, they'll be fleshed out more in the um staff summary with the should the hearing be continued. Um and that includes some landscaping and bike parking um measures that need to be remedied uh with the site plan that did not meet code requirements. Um but for the most part, um. Based on comments from the public and staff's review, um it does not appear that. If there are insurmountable um issues to be overcome with this site that they can be contemplated by the the commission. We're going to be providing additional information and evidence, um most importantly, from the police department. Um and also some studies that staff have undertaken uh through the traffic department. Um to address some of the concerns and issues that have been raised and provide that evidence as testimony as well into the record uh with the following. Staff report you'll be receiving.
Okay, Commissioner Bergen.
Thank you. Can you um clarify the restraints on the current use? Or potential use are age specific? The reason I ask is historically, there has been a um childcare facility, if you will. On the high school grounds because it's associated with the high school. In the future, could it potentially have moved over? Or meaning because those are not high school age students that are in that care. But it is still associated with the high school. Is that a potential in the future when you had mentioned high school wouldn't be able to expand out?
Um yes, I agree. If if there was, if if there is a childcare facility on the high school campus and it were to be relocated, it would be treated as a childcare facility. Um it may have affiliation or conjunction with the high school itself, but as a standalone facility, be looked at as its own. Um how on its own, I guess merits. Um and so. The state is becoming increasingly permissive of highs of daycare facilities in residential areas. Um so it would be a site plan review at best uh for location of um much if it were a childcare facility would go and would not be. Brought to a public hearing.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Any other commission questions before we move on to applicant um testimony and public testimony? And just wanted to remind you that there there will be another chance to ask Andy questions as well.
Just a question on the exact sighting and zoning. Uh this is not within the Washburn Historic District, is it?
No, it's not. It's just north, it's just on off the off the northern edge of the Washburn District, so it does not fall within. Either historic district or the downtown district.
Thank you. All right, any questions for for this portion? Yes. Okay, excellent, thank you. Um and Sarah, if we could get, um we're not moving to a public testimony yet, but if you could give um folks a thirty second warning. Before their time is up at the two minute thirty mark. Um but before that point, um and thank you, Andy. Um before that point, we'll hear a presentation from the applicant. The applicant isn't required to give a presentation.
Okay, we we didn't come prepared to present, but um are happy to answer any questions or clarify anything. Want more information about preschool versus childcare, if that would be helpful or. I know some of the questions were association with the Springfield School District or the university.
Yeah, if any um commissioners have any questions um for the applicant, I'm happy to field those now. There will also be an an opportunity to ask the um applicant questions after public testimony as well, so. Um but I'll just hold open the next few um the next minute or so to see if anyone has any questions at this point for the applicant.
May I ask one? Um I noticed that you're proposing a modular buildings, two modular buildings to be constructed on the site. Um why not a more advanced building or, I mean, I'm assuming you're going to cite these modular buildings on stem walls. I'd be I'd be interested to know. Um why not a more permanent building in that particular location?
Um I can respond to that. Um historically, um because we are a an education program through the Department of Education. For early childhood special ed, we do not have any authority to pass bonds or to actually uh buy real estate. Or buy buildings. So in the past, early uh preschools have really gotten creative. And in the eyes of um uh what's uh acceptable within our contracts. Buying a modular unit is acceptable with funds, so we have really huge classroom shortages. Huge and Springfield is one of the areas that that is the biggest. It's the second, we serve all districts in Land County. Springfield's our second largest district and they're um all kids with special needs. And um so get having some permanent classrooms that we can count on is going to be a tremendous help. Cause then the district buses kids, it'll stay within the the district boundaries, et cetera. But it is allowable under a contract and we can't really build buildings at this point. That might change. Uh in the legislature in the next few years.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question?
That's great.
Okay.
So any other questions from commission? All right, seeing none, thank you. Um and we'll have time now for um. Uh public testimony, so um we'll call public testimony first uh for folk, any folks who are in favor of the application. And then um next we'll have time for folks who are neither in favor nor opposed. And then finally for people who are uh opposed to the application. We will ask for everyone providing testimony to please state your name and mailing address and to keep your comments to three minutes and you will get. Um if you're getting close to that two minute and thirty second mark, Sarah will give you a warning um that you have thirty seconds to wrap up. All right, excellent. So first we'll call um any public testimony in favor of the application. All right, seeing none and seeing none online, we'll move to um anyone who is providing testimony neither in favor nor opposed to the application. Oh yeah, feel free to to step up to the the podium and.
My name is Curtis Phillips. Um I live at nine one six G Street uh block away from the proposed facility. Um I gave written testimony as well and I basically kind of stand by that, but hearing that it's special needs kids. I I want to emphasize what I said even more. Um we um I have two stepkids that live in my house. And we see speeding on the street constantly, uh particularly high school students. But uh let's just say uh busy parents are not uh immune to this either. And um I would like to see more facilities to take care of our kids in the community. I'm I'm all for that. Um however, something needs to be done about the traffic, um whether that be a speed bump like guys out in front of Dos Rios. Uh that just slows people down. Uh that's really my main concern is just slowing traffic down. It's going to be congested. It is a busy street. I do understand that. However, um with that being said. Um if you had kids in that neighborhood and you saw what was going on, you would be concerned. And especially if we're going to add more traffic and we're going to have buses and more just general activity in the area. Um I strongly recommend that um something happens either a stop sign. Um at the intersection where the proposal is is uh going to be cited or a speed bump. And I think a speed bump is probably um going to work and I realize it's a bus and that it's a collector's street and I I I read the uh. Read some of the emails, but um thank you. Um with that being said, um I just think that some mitigation around the uh. Excessive speed needs to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, any other testimony? Um neither in favor nor opposed? All right, seeing none and seeing none online, we'll move to any anyone who wants to provide public testimony opposed to the application.
My good day commissioners, my name is Michael McElrath. My mailing address is eight five eight zero nine South Willamette, Eugene. Um nine seven four seven seven. I did live for twenty five years at Ninth and G. And I am testifying here today in opposition formally. I don't necessarily oppose the work done by UC cares. Um it's more about the haste of the pro haste. That was taken with this process and the stakeholders. And by that, I mean um planning staff is directed to. Uh cooperate with the district to facilitate improvements surrounding education. That's to accommodate increasing um population, student populations. And to facilitate the other activities that are done by the schools. In this case, there is no functional opposition from the district. They're one of the largest property holders in the area. This is seen as sympathetic to their interests or their needs. Um the question that um Commissioner Bergen brought up around. Uh affiliation in conjunction with the high school for the future uses of that site seem irrelevant in that. Um if the high school were developing that site, they would be required to undertake some of the traffic studies that were omitted with the current application. It it uh seems to me that the application is being put forward with a large support from the city staff, which is appropriate. I lived in Springfield. I know we're favorable to development in a general sense. Sometimes that's come back to catch us on the backside. And even in this application, we're doing a little bit of rear guard work. To make up for what were maybe favorable planning uh conditions and environment. Most my my opposition occurs primarily on this basis. Those lots along the backside of Springfield High School on the south side are zoned R one. That entire area was omitted from the Washburn District and omitted from the downtown district. And it's left at an orphaned neighborhood. And I moved there in nineteen ninety six and it suffered from malaise of all kinds. Springfield is a very different town at that time. Now that area is entirely walkable and very desirable. And it became so in the course of my tendency and and life there, my ownership of that property. That I have documents that I'll submit today as part of the record. They include images of the historic construction of Springfield High School, which contained. A large amount of open space buffering it from the surrounding neighborhood. Springfield High School undertook in nineteen ninety eight, ninety seven, I'm sorry. Um the kind of significant step of vacating the alley behind. All right, I'm going to keep it short and I'll leave most of it with my written testimony. That alley was vacated, again affirming a boundary between the activities of the school and the residential neighborhood. So it's on that basis that I like to see that preserved. Most significantly, the current sighting puts the loading activities out in the public right of way. So as a city, we're asked to forego or cede a certain convenience or access to the environs around the site on their behalf. So for that reason, I'd ask you to think very closely and clearly and um consider whether it's really an appropriate site. For the applicant. That would be my testimony. I'll write written testimony and thank you for your time. I know you serve on a volunteer capacity and it's a lot to go through documents and code and.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it. And we will have an opportunity to ask, um now we'll move to um opportunities for the commission to ask uh questions again. Having heard from staff, the applicant and um from public testimony, we have the opportunity to ask questions. Either of the applicant, of staff or of people who have testified themselves. Excuse me. So um first we'll um have questions for the applicant. Um if there are any other questions that have come up since the the public testimony, any um questions that have arisen that you'd like to ask? Ask the applicant. I'll now field those. Commissioner Buck.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Uh uh. My question is kind of around um the high high traffic times that uh the program will uh. Will anticipate. I know that with preschool programs, um the start time and end time can vary some. And I'm, I'm just curious what those times will look like. Mostly is it, mostly as it relates to overlap with the high school and, and possibly some of those other high traffic times. Cause I'm just wondering if there's some differences there.
Would a representative of the applicant mind stepping to the podium to respond to that question?
I'm your correct commissioner, but there is some flexibility in the start and stop times. We usually do a morning preschool session and an afternoon session. And because our children are bused by Springfield School District by law. That we actually work with them to set our start and stop times. So there's flexibility. We look at it every year and it has to do with bus drivers' schedules. So I guess the answer to your question is we could be flexible and we do, we do that on a regular basis with transportation. Does, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you very much.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, seeing none. Any questions for, any additional questions for staff? Commissioner Stone?
My question is for Assistant City Manager La Dadi. I'm curious, I've noticed in the zoning map that there is. I'm sorry.
Andy, your question's for Andy.
The staff, Andy, staff. We have. You know, you don't get me on name tag. That's great. Thank you. I'm making you feel better. Okay, so, so I noticed there is a, a commercial district within that area, just like it's listed as NC. Something commercial, neighborhood commercial, pardon me. And I'm curious, the. The gentleman who spoke, he mentioned this seems to be an orphaned neighborhood. I'm curious what, and maybe. Staff Sandy, you can respond to this as well. What is the plan for that section? What is the city hoping to do for that section of our city? On G Street between the high school and the residential area. Is there one? Because I'm just noticing that there is that neighborhood commercial zoning on the singular parcel that's in there.
So I, I have some information about that site. I think it's at, I think it's at Sixth and G. It's about a block west on the corner, northwest corner there. It's vacant property. It used to be a store, a corner store. And I believe it was torn down in the nineteen eighties, maybe. So it's been vacant. It's also owned by the school district. So I don't know what their plans might be for that. It's zoned neighborhood commercial. The underlying designation, it would be residential. So depending upon the school district's desires or interests. We have, the city staff has not requested of them their plans for various vacant properties that are in this area. The property immediately to the east across Eighth Street also is vacant, also owned by the school district, also zoned R one. So that has not factored in to this site review and site development proceedings. It could be developed with residential. It could be developed with a daycare. Anything that would be within the listed uses within the district. And I suppose it could be disposed of. The school district did sell a school site off Rainbow Drive. It's now a subdivision. So it's possible that there could be. Disposition of properties if, if it's surplus to their needs. So I, I don't know if there's any intended uses for the neighborhood commercial. But because it's already zoned, a, a new market and office or something could go in there on the zoning. It's not the biggest site, so it would be have limited development potential. And not likely meet the needs of this particular user because of the need for some off-street parking plus play space. Plus the room for the, for a building. So it's, it's tight for, for this type of development. But it could be contemplated. So thank you. Yeah, sure, you can see. It's the, the site to the, I guess, the left. There's a pink rectangle. And that's the neighborhood commercial site question that's vacant. Okay, sorry, Seventh and G. So it's about a little over a block away basically from this site. And I don't believe we have anyone from the school district here that could answer that. If you are interested, we could ask about if there's any immediate plans and bring that forward at the next meeting in the staff packet. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Commissioner Buck?
Thank you Chair. I'm, and the, I, I, I'm just curious. You, you said that you're going to be asking for additional information from the police department, possibly other, others. Entities. And I'm, I'm curious, what exactly, is it just traffic? That you're going to be asking about or is there some additional information that staff is seeking for bearing on this decision?
Commissioner Buck, yeah, it'll be partially traffic and also enforcement, results of enforcement actions if any. The suggestion by public comments is that there is a speeding problem. Conversely, complaints are also listed of congestion. So you know, these are kind of diametrically opposite things. So there's either congestion where people are not able to move very quickly. In fact, some of the written comments suggested that people are backed up a couple of blocks at stop signs, waiting for buses and traffic to go through the four-way stops. At either Seventh and G or Tenth and G. On the flip side, there's concerns about speeding. And so all of these are existing conditions. What's being presented for the planning commission's consideration will be. Is this an environment that is appropriate for the listed use and the proposed use? Is the proposed use going to, going to increase the propensity for this problem, decrease it or have no effect? Was there going to be a need for mitigation to try to address concerns to pedestrians and traffic? And vehicles in the area, buses. So all of those things will be worthy of consideration and would factor into it. One thing that staff is looking to kind of address is perception versus what the reality is. The perception is that there's a speeding problem. Is that borne out with enforcement ticketing? Or is it essentially an unenforced area? Based on the information we have and have not presented it, there is, there is traffic enforcement like everywhere else in the city. And there are issues with people going through a stop sign, people having fender benders. People, you know, hit and runs on vehicles parked on the street, not unlike pretty much everywhere in the city. Is it more apparent and magnified at this particular location? We need to determine if the evidence bears that out or not and present those findings for the planning commission to consider.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Thompson?
Yeah, question for Andy. Thank you so much for the exhibit B. I reviewed in detail. I'd like to ask just two quick questions for confirmation. So based on my review of exhibit B, can I confirm that there are any applicable approval criteria that are not met in this application?
So attachment B is the discretionary use. At this point, staff does not have any criteria that are not met or that require any mitigation. The evidence does not bear that out at this time. But we want to have the complete set of facts before us, as well as any supplemental information that we've just received. And then be able to provide, I guess, response as appropriate. With information that has been gathered from the police department and also from the city's traffic department.
And last question, do you believe that based on your findings so far that any of the conditions of approval could not be met?
Based on what we've seen so far, no, there is, there is. Staff is not currently recommending any mitigation, but there may be measures that are recommended to address some of the concerns. Suggestions have ranged from stop signs, crosswalks, you know, speed bumps, stop signs, that sort of thing. All of these are traffic control measures. Some of them are more effective than others and more appropriate than others. As to whether dropping off students at the curb side and having them walk onsite essentially to the front door. Bears or warrants additional pedestrian protection measures. Staff will need to review that and provide that for the commission's consideration. I would suggest that no one is going to be coming to the site unaccompanied. You know, if they're basic, based on the age of the students at the facility, it's not likely that they would arrive unaccompanied. Either by vehicle or on foot or on bus, someone would be accompanying them. So that has some consideration as far as pedestrian crossings and origin of where the students might be coming from. Our understanding is they're predominantly going to be bussed to the facility. And that was the reason for requesting and providing a proposed bus zone at the front edge of the property.
Very much.
And Andy, our next meeting is scheduled for, in two weeks for June twenty first. Do you believe that you'll be able to hear back from the police department by that point? In order to make findings as well as review any additional materials that have been provided today?
Yes, yes, we do. We have information from the police department. It didn't make it into the packet. We want, we need to be able to synthesize it and summarize it in a way that identifies any issues. If they're illuminated with information or dispel concerns if, if it is not borne out by enforcement evidence essentially.
Thank you. Any Commissioner Bergen?
Thank you. I am not sure how this closely this will relate as this is a discretionary discretionary use permit, not a zone change officially. But as we know, the state planning goal ten is for housing and this is an R one property. Governor Kotek has issued a housing crisis and this would be taking away two lots, correct? And she has issued eighty six thousand units to be built in her first year in office. I'm curious if we have a usable land availability. I know we've seen that in the past to where we can see how much. If, if issuing this discretionary use permit does move forward and everything that you're talking about has been met. What effect that will have on the housing prices we already have by taking two lots away?
I guess it depends on how you look at it, whether the lots would have been available for housing or not. The, I, I'm not sure that the school district would be obligated to offer them up for housing as part of their holdings. So the argument could be made that there could have been housing provided on the site. They still have vacant property in the vicinity as well that could also accommodate housing. Should that be something that the school district chooses to participate or address? We are having housing units contemplated on the property immediately to the south. Well, I guess just to the southeast, the Catholic Community Services Site is looking at some emergency units. So there is, I guess, participation by property owners in the vicinity. The school district has not been one of them as of yet. And so I, I, and they're not here to, to respond to that. So staff, again, can make the request of the school district as to what their long-term vision is. For some of the vacant properties that they have, both commercial and residential. This classroom building does not preclude future residential use on the site is not changing the zoning. But it, there's a be an interim use for preschool for a, an indeterminate period of time. A number of years based on the investment that the applicant is looking to make into the site.
Great, thank you. And if I can have one question, one additional question. As I don't know and someone else might have, it just might be something that I may have missed. The discretionary discretionary use permit, is there an expiration on it? Or is it, how, how long does this stay with the property until the use changes? What does that look like?
It would allow for this particular type of use to locate on the site. It would remain with the property and not the applicant itself per se. Similar to a zoning, it allows for that type of use to be, I guess, continued or operate on the site. So as I mentioned in the kind of staff initial presentation, there could be a different school located on the site. The difference would be, it could not be for high school age students. Cause the high school is not a listed use in, in any residential district. So it would be, I guess, self-limiting. It would also require a site plan if they were to look at expanding the buildings or modifying the site or anything like that. That would be under another land use action that would be noticed to the, to the adjacent residents and property owners as well. So another opportunity to comment, not in a public hearing scenario, but at least in a public notification scenario.
Thank you. So if I'm understanding correctly, the discretionary use permit would be indefinite.
Correct.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Christina, you have additional.
Just additional clarification on your question on land needed for housing. When the city adopted the residential. Land, that residential housing needs analysis, that was the inventory of residential lands. There's a requirement to include within that designation also enough land for schools. So land for schools are intended to be in common accommodated within the R one zone and plan designation. According to the Development Code standards. So from the legal perspective of maintaining our inventory does not cause a conflict with the inventory we have available for residential land.
Great, thank you for that.
Just clarification, if I may, Christina, the, this application though is not for school use. Is it for a childcare facility or it is for a school use and so would not be considered part of that same inventory?
It is for a school use and it is part of the same inventory. But I also would point out that childcare facilities also would be part of the same inventory as well. They're also an allowable use. They do not require the discretionary use permit step. But they're also considered to be compatible with, and I guess, serving residential areas.
Perfect, thank you.
Any final, or any additional questions for, and we will have opportunity for the applicant to respond to all, all information that's been presented. Finally, but before the applicant has their final chance for rebuttal. Wanted to see if anyone on the commission has any questions for any persons who have provided testimony today. Seeing none. Oh, yeah. Commissioner Bergen?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a quick statement and not a question, but I just want to thank those that did step up and provide testimony. In whatever position that you held, because it is really important that you're part of the process and that you, we can hear from the community members as the planning commission. So thank you so much for doing that.
Definitely seconded here. All right, and now we'll have an opportunity and seeing no other questions or comments. We'll have the applicant's final chance for rebuttal to respond to any issues or items that have been brought up, either by staff or testimony.
I just, I'm, this isn't necessarily rebuttal, it's just more information. I really appreciate you bringing up the fact that we have an affordable housing crisis and it is one of the governor's priorities. She also has a priority. There's, there's an early learning and childcare desert in Oregon and she's declared that. So that's actually a very high and equal priority for her. So I, I guess if you look at it that way, we're working on one of her really high priorities as well, which is spaces. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
Right, so having heard from everyone, staff have recommended that we continue the public hearing for our next regular meeting. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, June twenty first due to the city's observance, observance of the Juneteenth holiday. Do we have any motions to continue the public hearing? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And. All right, and I'll definitely restate the motion.
Yeah, please restate the motion with all of the details about the time and place of the meeting.
So we have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing to the planning commission's regular meeting on Wednesday, June twenty first. At seven PM in City Hall. All right, and can we have a roll call of the votes?
Chair Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Chair Bergen?
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson?
Aye.
Commissioner Buck?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes Die?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
And Commissioner Smunk?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, so we will can reconvene for, to come back to the public hearing at our next meeting on June twenty first. Thank you everyone for, yeah, providing the information that you've been able to provide today. We hope that you can join us in a couple of weeks on June twenty first. Thank you. All right, and the next item of business is business from the. All right, and the next item of business is business from the planning commission. Are there any uh reports that we have of council actions? Commissioner Schmunk?
Uh okay, so um this was uh city council work session. Is that uh you do want work sessions as well as council meetings?
Absolutely.
Okay. Uh so it was a uh fairly short um work sessions uh is uh discuss master fees um and focused on some uh simplification affordability of those fees. Also discussed a code enforcement program, reconfiguration. The discussion included an update of uh current code enforcement processes and how those are becoming challenging due to staff con- uh constraints and the need for training. Um all reported code violations are addressed by staff, those that they receive um uh from concerned citizens. Um and uh they were, but the staff was concerned about the ability to maintain uh uh the integrity of the code enforcement by making sure they got back to all of those those folks. Um and then they'll be bringing more uh discussion uh to council in June. And then and then Ma- Mari, uh Molly um Mercarian presented the natural resources inventories and protections, urban growth, boundary expansion that we got in our uh, I think it was May twenty, May second uh meeting. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other reports on council actions? Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Chair. Uh yes, I have the city council meeting on May fifteenth, two thousand twenty three, twenty-three to reports. Um so uh staff member Sandy provided a update on planning uh staff efforts to implement the climate-friendly and equitable communities administrative rules. So these rules will impact the community engagement, land use and transportation in Springfield. Sandy provided the council with a memo uh explaining current efforts uh and areas in Spring- in Springfield that will be impacted by these rules. And the drafted key messages, which were presented to the um planning commission for the public that will that for the public, there you go. All in my thought there. Uh items discussed uh was a rate adjustments request by Santa Pac. Uh Springfield Mayor Ben Gordon recognized the Springfield High School basketball team and their recent accomplishment as state champions with a record of nineteen and oh and a collective GPA of three point five. Uh Springfield Mayor Ben Gordon declared May fourteenth through the twentieth as National Law Enforcement Week in Springfield. Um also updated ordinance repealing Springfield Municipal Code relating to industrial pretreatments and other routine matters included liquor license renewals, business from the audience uh regarding the Springfield Egan Warming Center. And uh the intergovernmental agreements for management and use of the Georgia Pacific Natural Area. And finally, uh the act um actually needed by the council to make Springfield's camping ordinance in compliance with House Bill three one one five involving uh camping and vehicles. Uh do free, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any final reports?
I I have an earlier one from April seventeenth, which Commissioner Thompson um put the ch- uh conclusion to. But um April seventeenth, the work session primarily was about even interviewing um new city councillors, uh which Beth Blackwell was ultimately uh chosen and sworn in. Um in addition, there was a longer discussion about a new fire codes from this um city fire marshal. They're using Springfield's fire marshals and regarding a new fee structure. That was a somewhat contentious a conversation regarding a fee structure there. In the actual meeting, um the primary item of business was authorizing this um city manager to begin a contract for uh engineering of the forty-second street near International Paper, repaving, reengineering and getting that worked in. Um the great victory within that is a twelve million dollars access to funding for that redevelopment. So that was a, that was an exciting bit. Uh that motion passed unanimously as a matter of course. Um again, the conversations about uh state law, HB three one one five um regarding um camping limits and all of that. They received quite a bit of public testimony and um and some clarifications about how well Amalane is subject not to the statute, but it is subject to the court findings regarding camping. Um otherwise, one other minor um annexation matter in on North Street, one property, they just readjusted the different lines. And so that was a positive um result of conversations between well, Amalane, the city, other various districts, working together to make make sense of some odd zoning in the past.
That's that. Thank you. Any other um reports of council actions? All right, seeing none. Any other business from the planning commission? All right, seeing none. Any business from the Development and Public Works Department?
Uh so we'll continue um having your meetings through the summer. Unfortunately, we have a lot of work coming to you. But as you've already discussed, you'll have a meeting in two weeks plus one day on Wednesday for work session to cover what we didn't get to tonight, the continued public hearing. If you are able to make a decision that night, we'll only have one meeting in July. And that will be the public hearing jointly with Lane County Planning Commission on our comprehensive plan map and corresponding policy and code changes. Um and then August first will be um public hearings on code amendments that have to do with the stormwater um compliance with our permit with DEQ and Department of Environmental Quality, the parking requirements for climate-friendly equitable communities and some miscellaneous other code changes. And that will also be a joint hearing with Lane County. So you're gonna get to know each other. And then depending on how those go, you may or may not have a second meeting in Au- in August. So I just wanted to really point out those two pu- joint public hearings um coming up on your calendar for this summer. So please hold those dates.
You definitely will.
Thanks, and I don't have any other business. Okay, I think we're done.
All right, thank you, everyone. I now adjourn the planning commission regular meeting. Thanks, everyone.
It's fun to see.